As we have, as we have started doing for the, for all council meetings, so if you'd like to join in with council to reflect, that's fine. Thank you. Thank you. So I'll rise and pledge allegiance, and I'm going to ask Brad Stipes.
You pledge an allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under adjustment of the agenda, I would like to place two items to be added to the agenda in a proper spot. One, and we can do this under consent agenda, it is the small business Saturday resolution. It's the same one that we passed last year. The verbiage is the same, it's just signed with a new date to it. We can do that under consent agenda. That was joint effort with the chamber. And under new business, item E, I would like to add for discussion the budget for the annual Christmas parade from tourism. Anyone else like to make any amendments?
I'll second that.
I can't make the motion, but. So move in a second, Mr. Hubbard, and Mr. Showalter, thank you. Ma'am clerk.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is five oh, and Mr. Hall is absent tonight. Public hearings, we have a conveyance of .069 acre portion of Stone Street to Kroger Limited Partnership One. I believe that has come before council at one point, came up last week, and this is finalized. Mr. Moore, thank you.
Correct. This is your first meeting in November. You approved the vacation of Stone Street, and this is the conveyance portion. So now it is the second part of the process that the town was able to vacate its interest in the right of way at the last meeting, and this would be a consideration of dedicating that .069 acres to Kroger Partnership, Kroger Limited Partnership One.
Okay. Anyone like to comment on this? Hearing done. Questions from council? We're pretty good. Close public hearings. Under the consent agenda, we have four items. That is the minutes of the November the 8th, 2016 council meeting, the monthly bills, a resolution supporting application for allocation from VDOT for revenue sharing projects, and D is the small business Saturday resolution.
Make a motion and approve the consent agenda?
Second.
The motion in the second. Any discussion, questions? Ma'am clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Thank you. That's five oh. Citizens comments. This is a time that we have set aside for citizens to come before council to express concerns, make suggestions, or surely be in contact with the council. We ask that you rise, give your full name and address, and we would prefer to go to the podium. If your voice projects well, then you can sit at your chair. Anyone here to address council? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Christine Carney, and I live at 750 Starlight Drive. I noticed in the newspaper last week, and it was passed on to Sunny Pryor, about the potential water prices that are going to go up because of the refurbishment we need to do. I understand that we need refurbishment. I can't imagine how we could build a swimming pool before we could refurbish the water plant that feeds it. I don't know how we got so far behind, and I don't understand why we have to spend our money to fix the problem. Are there no other avenues to fix this? I agree, it needs to be done. It absolutely needs to be done. And if we do it at the pace that this article says, 10% a year for the next five, 10 years, by the time you get the things replaced, you're going to need to replace them again. I know a little bit about mechanics and pumps, and bearings wear out. So by the time you do the step program, you're going to be looking at having to continue it, number one. Number two, do we not have no other means to fund this project? Can we not use the slush fund? Can we not raise a nickel on our taxes? Can we not do something? I work, I live around a lot of people that are on fixed incomes. They absolutely cannot afford their water bill to double. I can't either. I've done everything as a resident that I can possibly do to cut back on my water usage, including the water saver faucets on the bathrooms and the kitchen sink, the energy saving washing machine, which a lot of people can't afford to spend money to do. But I've gone as far as I can go to try to save money and save water. Surely y'all can help us out a little bit by finding other ways to make this happen. I agree, it needs to be done. I don't know how we could build a swimming pool eight years ago and not take care of this first.
I will say that the problems at the water treatment plant came to light less than two years ago.
Yes, sir.
And so, at that point, we had no idea that things were in it. The swimming pool is very, is a very viable.
It's nice.
And it provides $15 million a year in economic impact.
How much money are we going to save if we fix these water leaks and things and the problems that are at the water plant?
Well, I don't know how much we're going to save, but we're certainly going to ensure that we have water. And this is a, this is a, an authority. So it's just not you and me paying for it. It's the citizens of Blacksburg, the students at Virginia Tech, and Montgomery County. We're all in the same.
Which means our taxes in Montgomery County are going to go up too in order to pay for it as well, right?
I can't speak for Montgomery County.
How else can they possibly raise the money?
I don't know.
As a citizen of Christiansburg, we pay taxes in Christiansburg and Montgomery County.
Mm-hmm.
Are you telling me that y'all explored every avenue and there's no other way to pay for this project?
Pretty much so.
Wow.
May I make a comment, Ms. Carney?
Certainly.
Mayor. Usually I just speak for myself, but in this case, I would like to assure you that every single person at this table elected has grave concerns and reservations about passing along additional costs to our citizens. I can, I can tell you that. I feel like I could speak for us, the conversations have been part of. So I want to tell you, this is not taken lightly. The other thing I want to share with you is, the percentages that you read about increases are the cost of raw water. That doesn't necessarily, your, the bills are not going to go up at that same rate. This is just, the cost of raw water, the authority is our wholesaler, basically. That's who we buy the water from, and lots of other costs are represented in your water bill. That's not, it's not the cost of raw water. The cost of raw water, this council has selected an option that will make that a gradual increase rather than, you know, have these huge steps, you know, at certain times during that, during that period. But I want to say also that, my second point is, that this does not mean your water bill is going to double. What it means is, the cost of our wholesale water is going up, and this council just selected one of the three options for doing that. So if you think your water bill is going to double, that's not, the, the cost of raw water is going to go up gradually, but that doesn't, that's not necessarily going to be reflected in your water bill as a doubling. Does that make sense?
Yes, it makes sense, but the way I understand my water bill is, for every gallon you use, you also pay for a gallon of treatment afterwards.
Well, my two comments are limited to that. First of all, yeah, we've, we take this very seriously, and we've had some very serious discussions about this. And I guess I'll add a third comment, like the mayor said. This is a very grave situation.
I understand.
We don't have, we don't have a Plan B for how to provide, you know, safe, clean drinking water, which we have some of the best in the country here, and we're blessed as a result of having this great supply. But there is not a Plan B, so we, we share your attitude that this has to be done, and we're just selecting what we think is the best option for accepting the reality that the cost of raw water is going to go up. Now, the bills aren't necessarily going to be, you know, doubling. This is just the cost of water itself, than the other costs, or the cost to get it to your home. And we're taking other steps to reduce, you know, infiltration and inflow and trying to fix leaks and so forth. But I've said enough. I just want to make sure that you understand those two points. We do share your concern. We're not taking this lightly. And what we're talking about is the cost of raw water, not necessarily your water bill going up that amount.
Then you're telling me that the article that I read in the run-up time was wrong? It says.
That was a deer hoof.
No, is, is it going to go up? It says it's going to go up 9% from 2018, 2021.
Ma'am, I'll offer that up, and that is, the percentages that are mentioned in the article are not percentage increases in your retail cost.
Right.
That, okay, that is not, those two things do not correlate. Now, we are having some work done now that we know the increasing cost of our wholesale water. We're having some work done to see what the impact of that is going to be on our retail customers, but that is not a known amount. And it would be, as the councilman has referenced, a lesser percentage because the cost of the wholesale water is just a small part of our total cost of operations. So you can't equate that percentage increase with a retail increase. That, they, they don't relate. Your total cost would be, in all likelihood, less than that. Now, we can't tell you what that will be once our work is done, now that we know the numbers from the authority. We have their numbers. We can take those numbers and, and we can do a retail rate analysis. That is underway, and, and that will be a known amount. Right now, it is not a known amount. So if, if the article reported that that was an increase on the retail level, then that would not be correct, because we don't know what the increase on the retail level is going to be yet, if that helps. And, you know, we will be glad to follow up with you directly and personally when that work is completed so that we're sure that you have accurate and complete information about that. But we don't even know what it is at this point, because that work is being done by other engineers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to address council?
I would. My name is Jonathan Taylor, and I live on 685 School Lane here in Christiansburg. I submitted a concern to the engineering department about flooding on my street here while that, and I've not heard anything back about it. It's gotten to the point that every time it rains, we have two to three feet of water in front of our house and four and five feet in the basement. We've got gallards that are three feet in diameter that go down to six inches to nothing. There's no place for the water to go whatsoever.
Where is this?
Did you say your address, please?
Right on the street, on 685 School Lane. I submitted pictures, and John, I can't remember his last name. He actually came out and spoke with me, but I have not heard anything back from him for resolution.
If you wouldn't mind, let me follow up with the engineering staff and get your specific information. I'll be back in touch with you. If, if you could, either pass me your number or just give me a call, so I'll, either way, then I'll follow up with you directly.
Anyone else? Here in the one, close citizens' comment section, we now are going to introduction of new employees. Ms. Tweedy, I believe you have the first new employee.
This is Kim Kermer. She is our new purchasing quarter coordinator. She's a native of Christiansburg, went to Virginia Tech, where she received a bachelor's degree in nutrition and exercise. She went to work at Moog, and while working there, she was a buyer and planner, and determined that she loves the purchasing side of the business, and she's purchased several commodities ranging from hardware to bearings and specialized machine parts. She was also the leader of her quality assurance team to ensure her team is meeting on-time deliveries, scrap goals, and overtime goals. In her free time, she enjoys outdoors, including hiking, fishing, and kayaking. She currently resides in Pembroke with her fiance and her daughter, and she's very excited about joining our team, and we're very excited to have her.
Give, stand up. Thank you. Travis Moles?
Good evening. The first employee I'll introduce is Lucas Graham. Lucas joined our team earlier this month as a utility maintenance worker. He comes to us from Virginia Tech, where he has three years' experience working in utility and street maintenance. Lucas is from Craig County, and when he's not working, he enjoys hunting and fishing. The second employee I'll introduce is Jeffrey Bishop. Jeffrey joined our team earlier this month as well. He comes to us with 20 years' experience in driving and equipment operation. Before he come to the town, he worked at Rafford University, Rafford City, and most recently, the city of Salem. When he is not at work, he also enjoys hunting, fishing, and camping. And then the next employee I'll have, Justin Shepard, our street supervisor introduced.
I'll introduce Thomas Lineberry. He just came to us last month as a truck driver on our street division. He's been to the Alliance Driving School. He's got 10 years' of driving experience. When he's not at work, he likes basically anything outdoors. And then he also enjoys doing activities with his trucks.
And where did he come from, Mr. Lineberry? Where was your previous employer?
He's got some experience with Richland Whaling.
Oh, okay.
Was at Nichols Construction also, working a line truck. So he's got a pretty good background for us.
Richland Whaling, a good place. Now, you live here in town?
Live in Pembroke.
Thank you. Jerry Henlon?
Counsel, I'd like to introduce Will Yeager. Will comes to us from the town of Blacksburg. Prior to that, he owned his own construction business, specializing in residential construction. Will has 10 years' experience as a building inspector, so he's brought a wealth of knowledge and experience to us in that capacity. He comes to us already certified through the state of Virginia, which was a good thing. Will is a combination inspector, meaning he performs inspections on various trades, both in commercial and residential backgrounds. We feel fortunate to have been able to gotten Will with the experience and level of knowledge that he has in, in construction. He's a tremendous asset already, and I feel only improve as time goes on. In his spare time, you can see him riding around town on his motorcycle as he is a resident of Ella Drive. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Nice to meet you all.
Thank you. I believe that's it. Mr. Biggs? Welcome aboard. Welcome aboard. Next item on the agenda is introductions and presentations. Mr. Biggs, do we have something going on here?
Yes, sir.
We do not. Okay. Under old business, we have an amendment to the 2013 Comprehensive Plan to designate four urban development areas within the town of Christiansburg. The public hearing was held November the 8th, 2016. So that is, Mr. Warren, is that you again? Are we all right with it?
We do not have a report for this evening. As, as, as.
She just wants to vote and pass this thing.
I'll make a motion that we approve the amendment to the COT plan as presented to us, including the four UDAs.
We got a motion in a second.
Second.
Any conversations, questions?
I'm excited about it.
Oh, yeah. It's going to fit right in with everything we got. Madam clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
This is five oh. Thank you very much. Preliminary discussion regarding the operating agreement for Kiwanis Park. Mr. Biggs?
This is an item that we dealt with back in August. There's a special work session. I think prior to that time, there had been some consideration to a little different type of agreement between the town and the Kiwanis for use of it. And so what we sought to do through that work session process was really simplify the agreement. You had included in your agenda packet preliminary draft that is provided to you in anticipation of providing similar proposal to the Kiwanis for their consideration. The attorney has drawn this up based on our staff's, mine and the recreation director's understanding from that work session. There was one item pending further review, and I think the attorney may be ready to speak to that in terms of the insurance and how that would apply to third parties, and there's some legal considerations. So I'll look further.
Yeah, actually, I did send Steve some revision to this, and what it primarily addressed was, it says November instead of October. But also, we have, we, the town cannot indemnify the Kiwanis. I think how we've addressed that in the past is, we do pay. The town contributes to their insurance policy, which we would continue to do, is my understanding. The other thing is that we would not require people who use the shelters and, like, for family gatherings and small group gatherings to carry insurance. Large event organizers would, would need to provide insurance to the Kiwanis. And if that's okay, I think those are the changes you requested, Steve.
Yes.
Yeah, so we have, I have made those changes, and, but it was after the packet.
Yeah, that was my fault.
So the, the, what we're looking at right now is?
Has been revised to reflect the November date, and also to change the section with regards to insurance indemnity, to remove the town's indemnification of the Kiwanis, because we cannot do that. We can't have an open indemnification. But, and we would continue to, everything else remains the same, except that we've made clear that people who rent the shelters, you know, for family gatherings, that kind of thing, they don't have to get an insurance policy to do that. Only large event organizers would have to do that, and they would have to provide insurance holding the Kiwanis, you know, harmless, and also the town. So I will be happy to answer any questions you have, if there's other questions.
I looked for two things. I read this earlier. The two things, actually, I looked at insurance, and from what I recall, I didn't, I don't have it in front of me now, but you had a maximum of $1,000 that we would pay per year.
Yes.
Help them cover, is $1,000 enough?
That, I have not heard anything from the Kiwanis, and.
That would be one question. I want to make, $1,000 is nothing.
Right.
Compared to what the benefit we're getting. So that's just a question. I'm happy to see that increase, if it needs to increase. And the second thing, I want to commend you for including the sign in there. That was another thing we decided, is to make sure that the community knows that this is a partnership between the Kiwanis and the town. When they come to the park, it's a reminder of that, and I was happy to see that in the agreement.
Well, I have to thank Steve for that, because he kind of gave me a bullet point list, which I really appreciate. Of things that needed to be in there. So it makes my job a lot easier.
So I'll just throw that out there. If $1,000 is enough, fine, let's roll, and if it needs to be more than that, I'm fine with that, too.
I guess what we can do is just submit it to the Kiwanis as a draft, let them give us feedback on that issue, and then we'll just go from there. Let them know that that's a placeholder until they tell us differently.
I'll make a motion, and I'll just make a motion. We can discuss it further. I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement as presented by the attorney for the Kiwanis property.
Got a motion in a second? Any discussion? I, I do know that this will go back to the Kiwanis Park Committee to review. I think it's, I've read it over. I've read the first one that we ever did, and I've read every one. I'm in between. I think this is pretty, as close as you can get without going over the retail price. And I think that $1,000 insurance, that's, that's pretty close to, it was in the 900 range or better, four, five years ago.
I wouldn't want to see it be, put it this way, I wouldn't want to see it be 1,300 and we have to revisit this again.
Right, okay.
Because our maximum they're allowed to give is $1,000.
So we're in agreement with the, at this point, with this oper, with this?
I just made a motion, and someone seconded it.
Yeah, Steve did. Do we want to vote on this now, or wait until the Kiwanis gets it and see what changes are made?
Well, I think we need to vote. We're in favor of.
Of this and the changes Theresa mentioned.
And if there's changes that come back, then we'll have to renegotiate. But we got, I, I think it's good that we come forward saying, this is, this is the hand that we're dealing. Madam clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That would be five oh, and Mr. Hall certainly is, is not here. Two new items, appointment to, of town of Christiansburg representative on the 911 Authority Board. Mr. Helms filled that position, and it expires at the end of December. Mr. Biggs, have you had conversation?
Yes, sir. Do we want to go back up to the old business item before we get to the?
Oh, yeah. I got way on down there, didn't I? Follow-up report on Starlight Drive Theater complaints. This matter was first brought to council October the 25th, 2016. Randy, I think this is your project.
Just kind of a rough topic on. It's not guaranteed to be every, necessarily every college would doubt, but just give you a general background of.
Appreciate that.
You know, did this kind of sort of like planning and police department to make sure that it, if anything, just maybe every major that.
Also, just to let you know, I have spoken with the chief system about the matter, and asked that he make contact and see if the, there would be interest in holding kind of a joint meeting between the neighborhood representatives and the owners. The feedback that we got, at least from the neighborhood side of things, was that they were not really interested in a joint meeting. And so, you know, we've invited that, but we don't see that now becoming a part of the process, because we just didn't receive an affirmative response on that. That in mind, chief system has kind of indicated that his expectation is that in the spring of the year, prior to reopening, that he would perform a task similar to what he did in the past, and that is to visit the site, listen to the sound impact, given the changes in the bass megahertz allowance that the, the sound engineer spoke to, the changes in the positioning of the speakers, and, and do an evaluation of the impact on the adjoining properties in relation to the ordinance, that he would be there onsite to verify that in his evaluation, that the, the site would be operating under described parameters on the bass and on the volume in a way that would be within the ordinance. So the, the staff at this time is not contemplating proposing to the council, because we've received no instruction to do any sort of amendment to the ordinance. Where we are is in the compliance mode. I know that there is interest among the council to bring this matter to closure, but of course, the, the theater is not currently operating, and I think that's why the assumption is that the, the, the site visit would take place in the spring, because it would be immediately prior to the reopening. That's where we are on that.
Does the neighborhood, do they have a spokesman who is sort of the person that maybe we could just go through that one person and explain what you just said, and he could make sure that people in the surrounding area knew what we're trying to do and make sure we have good communications?
I don't have perception that there's an official spokesperson. I mean, we do have some individual contact from neighborhood interests that we could follow up with for those that we do have contact information, but I, I don't have any perception that the neighborhood has organized around an appointed spokesperson.
I guess we couldn't even hand out flyers. It'd be quite a few houses to.
We could do that. We could do a mailing. That would not be a problem for us to put together a mailing on the status of the matter, if that would be the interest of the council.
I, I think that would be an interest for me, just to, to show the neighbors that we are trying, and we are, I mean, this is, it's a very delicate situation that we are bringing forth ever.
Are you asking for a mailing to come to the meeting, or their perception?
Just what, what Mr. Biggs just outlined to, to us, and that'd be on that, on the flyer. And so they would have an idea of, that we just haven't written it off, you know, and that what, what we're trying to do.
Well, what the neighborhoods, or the neighbors that are complaining, I believe are, are, what we've agreed to is what we already have in our policy. It's our compliance, right? This is right now, which is what the neighbors.
That's my understanding, is that ordinance stands as a status quo?
That's a result.
Well, the neighbors have spoken, and, and the town has listened, and the business has made some commitments, and now we're, we have to let it set until they go back into business again and see how it's working. In, in accordance with our, we have to see how it, whether or not it complies with our ordinance. That's basically where we're at. Neighbors have spoken, we've listened, and the business has made some concessions and made some commitments, and now we're going to revisit that in the spring.
At this time, we're not going to address changing the ordinance or make any allowances within the ordinance. Is that correct?
That's my understanding of instruction from council.
I'm comfortable with that, yeah.
And that was not my point, really, to, to, to say that we've done it, but just to say what we, what we're trying to do. we, what we're trying to do.
If you're interested in having us do a mailing with this same status report just provided tonight, we're glad to do that.
Okay.
Are you, I'm not really, I think, the, I mean, the council meetings that we've had, the neighbor shown up, and I'm sure staff has talked to a lot of the neighbors around there, at least the people who have problems with it, and we listen to them.
Chief has been in contact with several, I'm aware of that.
I really don't want to do a mailing, but I'll leave it to the rest of the council.
All right. Thank you. Now to new business.
I don't think Steve has a direction he needs.
I'm not doing the mailing because I wasn't told to.
That's right. We're not doing a mailing, we're not making any adjustments to any ordinances whatsoever at this point.
Well, do we have any other, I think a mailing would be good. Does anybody else have any thoughts of view on that?
A Christmas card mail, that is all.
That's right.
No, I don't think so.
That's what I get from being late to a meeting.
All right. All right, you got it?
Yes, sir.
And a new business, resolution in support of Town of Blacksburg Smart Scale application for bus stop shelters and improvements. Randy, is that yours?
Yes. Basically, this resolution is required for smart scale applications to accompany it. Blacksburg has actually made the application for the shelters, as part of the Blacksburg system. And the stops, the new stops would be Electric Way and Bishop Street, Constant Avenue and Spadly Farm Drive, Remit Street, Hungate Street, and Farm V Road and Rodney Street are four of the most new shelters.
Okay. So you need a motion to this resolution? I think the resolution is in the packet.
It's a quiet council, I'll go and make a motion.
Second.
Approve it.
Motion second. Any other comments, questions, or any questions? Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's five, oh, thank you. Christiansburg Aquatic Center, six month, month lease renewal with Radford City for the use of our, of the facility.
Honorable Mayor Barber, Town Council Mr. Biggs, I come before you this evening to ask for the second renewal to the agreement between the Town of Christiansburg, the City of Radford, for use of the Christiansburg Aquatic Center. Currently, the City of Radford pays $6,000 for six months. That includes 200 visits per month. If they go over 200 visits, we bill them $5 per person. So I would like to ask for an extension of that, and also, if Radford is willing, see if they would like to go into a one-year agreement instead of six months, if council agrees. I'd like to share some numbers with you from the City of Radford. Since January of 2016, we've had 2,457 residents of the City of Radford at the Aquatic Center.
Since what?
One busy month was June of 2016, we had 407 visits. So the least was 103 visits in one month. So the agreement is working excellent. What they do is they bring in their ID card from the City of Radford, their recreation ID card, we keep an Excel sheet of it, and we turn it into that monthly. So it's a really process, it works great, and I'd like to have your permission to go on with another six months.
Absolutely, I'd like to get them on for a year if they would.
I had the opportunity Saturday evening to talk with Mayor Brown from Radford, and he said it makes perfect sense. He said, "We're not going to build another pool." So they would like to, they would like to go a year at a time.
Great.
So if we prepare whatever we need to do.
Okay, so we'll proceed.
Is the high, is the high school swim team, are they separate from that?
They are separate. That's the second, a separate contract.
They have a huge high school swim team.
Do the?
They come over and swim in our pool or train.
Well, it meets three goals. We're getting more visitors, we're, it's not costing our citizens anything, and we're getting more use, uses, more use, more revenue, and it's not doing, you know, it's not having adverse effect on our citizens. I think it's ideal. So I support it.
Yes, sir, I agree. We see, I see a daily. I see such a major difference from six years ago. And it's, I said, we have to get to five years. Take it a little bit longer than five, but I'm very pleased.
That's great, that's great.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we would like to make a motion?
Yes, we are.
I will make a motion then, that we extend the contract we have with the City of Radford, and that we approve an extension instead of a six-month to a full-year extension under the terms that you just wrote out.
Great.
So it'd be, there'd be a six-month or a year, if the, if the city is so inclined to do it for a year, and a double of those figures.
And if not, there's still two six-month renewals on this agreement.
Okay.
The motion?
Second.
Motion second. Any other, any discussion or comments? I will say that my conversation with Bruce Brown the other night, he was, he was very interested in it, and I told him that I would have our people call his people, and we'll determine how we want to go with it. I think he's going to, once we contact him, I think he's going to bring that to his council. Did speak to one of the other council members, and he said that makes sense to do, so I think we can get that done. That way, nobody comes back every six months and everybody's happy. All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's five, oh, thank you very much. Now, appointment, I think, appointment of Town of Christiansburg representative on the 911 Authority Board. And as I stated earlier, Mr. Helms was, stayed on, he stayed on until the end of December. Mr. Biggs, have you contacted, very?
Yes, Mr. Helms indicated to me last week the expectation that we would be making a new appointment in his place as his term is expiring. And I did speak with Chief Billy Hanks to see if he might be interested in serving in that capacity. It's obviously a very important board, serves a very important function. I think there's value in having someone with his expertise in that role, and so we would recommend to you that he would be appointed to service in that capacity.
I still move? Second.
Motion second to appoint Billy Hanks to the 911 Authority Board. Any comments, questions? All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's five, oh, thank you. Appointment of Town of Christiansburg representative on the NRV Regional Solid Waste Authority.
Mayor, members of the council, you're probably aware, but our Public Works Director Ricky Born currently represents us on that particular board, and he will be departing for another position in the state of North Carolina, and so we are faced with needing to find his We do not yet have a candidate for Public Works Director. I can tell you that it's not a role that I particularly am interested in, and so I would really defer to the council to evaluate the best selection there.
They meet 1:30 PM the second Thursday of each month. I would, until such time as we can fill it with someone out of Public Works. If we do that, then I would be glad to fill that position.
Who's the, Jim?
Lantines.
Lantines is the assistant. Can he temporarily fill it until, would that be an issue?
I don't think that that would be a problem. Of course, given that the director's position is going to be vacant, you know, his time is going to be at a premium as well.
What about Ryan?
Outside of his area.
Outside of his area?
Yes.
Wayne, you see, I'm looking over at you, correct?
Wayne's already on Water Authority, and I think he's got his hands full with that.
Well, at one point, we had Lance, our town manager was on the Water Authority, the Solid Waste Authority, and what else was he on? So if anything, Steve, could you be on it until you hired somebody? Just temporarily? Do you have that time?
I certainly would never tell the council no if you ask something of them, but I would tell you that it is not among my goals to serve the council and the town as a board member in that role. We have enough to do operationally in terms of, you know, my time and attention. Something, you know, further along, you know, a couple of years, three or four years from now, I would like to get involved at a higher level, on the regional level, to represent the town's interests, but, you know, in terms of where I am with the Town of Christiansburg right now, I'm really focused on daily operations.
Well, I think the mayor has volunteered to do it, and I would think that'd be just for a short period. I imagine we're going to replace him with the, as soon as we get a good candidate, and I would think that'd be done in the next couple of months. And if Mr. Born wanted to do it for those couple of months, I would think that would be all right.
If there was even a meeting, I would volunteer for it, but during the day, it's hard for me to commit.
That's the first thing that I researched when Ricky brought me the minutes of the last meeting, and it is a 1:30 meeting, and it pretty hamstrings a bunch of us.
Well, I think, just to throw something else out there, and both Henry, Councilman Showalter, and Councilman Hall, who have an interest in recycling, and maybe even Councilman Bishop, I'm not sure, but I think with regional waste, that certainly is part of their discussions, is recycling and...
It is, it is, that is correct, yes.
How long do you think it would take you to hire a public works? Sixty days?
Probably that, yes, sir.
I mean, I'm not so against Mike temporarily doing it, but coordinate and split the two months, but Mike wants to do it, and so I don't have a problem as long as it's temporary and that we're, we're in agreement that our new public works director will be our liaison on that board.
Well, I, let me answer that question or respond to that this way. If we, once we have the position filled, we would look for the right fit from the public works operation. You know, when I consider my role with the town and my learning curve and the possibility that, you know, someone else would be faced with a similar, you know, experience of new position and new town and learning curve associated with that, it may well be that someone other than the director in the public works hierarchy would be the right fit. But if it's the interest of the council, that there be a staff person in that role, once that position is filled, then we would look for that right fit. And I would bring that back to you as a recommendation. I'm anticipating that, you know, a person going into the public works director's position is going to be faced with a lot of the same challenges in terms of learning the operation and looking at issues such as restructuring and reorganization. In fact, not only am I anticipating that, I'm certain of it and looking forward to it. And so, you know, I just don't want to suggest to the council that that is the default best pick from the staff, because I don't know that yet. I would really want to network that with the new director and see how he views his time or she views her time with the town and what the assessment of their, you know, subordinate staff would be in relation to this particular role. Mr. Lantines certainly has the knowledge and capability, but what we are intending to do during this interim period, rather than appoint an interim public works director, is I'm going to work with the two superintendents as, as the leaders of two different divisions. So Ryan and Jim will be my go-to people during, during that time, so obviously, they're going to have more, they're going to be doing the same job they always did, plus splitting in many ways, especially as we go into this new budget process, the director's position for a period of time. So I think that both of them will have their hands full. So for right here, right now, I don't have a staff recommendation.
So do we need a motion?
You need a motion?
All right, I make a motion that, I make a motion that we allow Mike, uh, Mayor Barber fill the position until the position is filled with the appropriate person.
Okay.
I'll second that. Are you amenable to that, Mayor?
I am, yes.
Okay, great, okay.
That's fine.
That's easy, then.
Any comments, questions? Madam Clerk?
Could I get the second on that?
Me.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Thank you, that's fine, Mayor. Thank you. Next is the, the item that I had added. The, as we know, Christmas Parade is December the 9th. There's a lot of things going on, a lot of changes with it, and we never really set any type of a budget out of tourism, which I think we all decided was, that was part of the Christmas Parade thing. Rough estimate, I don't think that the expenses, and we're talking, you know, porta johns and rentals of these type things, they're $180 apiece. There's some, some other incidentals, and I know we have to have the porta johns that have the capability to wash their hands down on the food truck side, so I would like to consider $2,500 as the operating budget for the, and I'm sure, sir, you'll need some stuff. I mean, it's just, it's a combination of everything. At this point, tourism has, has been untapped. We have $24,833 in our portion of tourism.
I'm good with it, because we put some in it last year, didn't we?
Is that coming out of the mayor's discretionary funds?
Don't have discretionary funds, I don't have slush funds. I've asked, but they won't let, the mayor's honey pot.
That's what we did in the past.
I'm fine with that.
And how much was it last year? Was it three?
I can't, I don't know, Val.
Maybe, I was, I was...
I think it was around $2,400 last year.
Okay. So what I'd really like to have is an unlimited expense account so I can exceed it. Okay, so do I?
So Henry made the motion.
Henry moved.
Yeah.
Second.
Harry, thank you. Any other comments?
Let's, let's make it as good as it was last year.
It's going to be better. And I'm going to go over a little bit more of that in, in the mayor's report later. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
Thank you, that's five, oh. Committee reports, street committee, flat showing subdivision of Tech Parcel 465-8-38, hereby creating one, lots one through five of Cambria Crossing, Phase Four, for Shaw Development LLC, five lots, eastern corner of Phoenix Boulevard Northwest and Cambria Street Northwest.
Mr. Mayor, I believe when this was brought out previously, the council supported it all. You know, I was a little bit hesitant, but I did go down there and look it over, and the, slowly is the, is a lot better than I thought it was at one time, and I think maybe it is, is better.
Hey, in the second meeting, in the second meeting in September, council approved a conditional use permit to Shaw Development for a reconfiguration of the vacant lot, vacant property that fronts Cambria Street. The previous layout had six lots, and there were some questions or some concerns that the residents stated. And what you see before you is basically the final act or the last foot of the capitulation of the action we took in September. It reflects, it reflects the approved conditional use permit. Specifically, there are now five lots, and the access has been reconfigured according to what the developer agreed to do and the residents were okay with. So the flat before you is presented, the street committee's reviewed, and it does reflect the conditional use permit conditions that, or the proffers, actually, that were offered by the developer. And the lot, the lot configurations conform with our subdivision ordinance, and the street committee's reviewed it and found that the plat recommends the plat for approval as presented, and I'll make that recommendation in a form of a motion.
I second.
Got a motion of a second. Any further discussion?
Well, that, this does include the, I think there's two additional entrances to the area.
No, there was, if you look at the plat, just to answer your question, if you look at the plat, the previous entrance that had some people concerned was it was coming up up along the top of the property, along the alley, and it was going to create more traffic on that private alley. The new entrance is shown between lots one and two, as you see there. That's basically a joint driveway is what it is. That will, that will serve lots one, two, lots four and five. Now, lot two could be served either by the, using the air or it may end up being served on, on this one up here. But this is what the residents were concerned about, this addressed their concern, the developer was willing to do it. And actually, it makes better sense, because now the residents, quite honestly, Steve, or Councilman Hubbard, between lots one and two, the residents that will, the homeowners that come out of there, and they come out to Phoenix Boulevard, will no longer have to turn right and go all the way up and turn around. They can pop right out there without shining their headlights in anyone's house or, or interrupting. So it's, it's a better situation. And as far as traffic goes, the residential use, part of the reason, I think, the council acted on this favorably, was that the residential use is going to generate a lot less trips than being commercial or being a convenience store or something like this.
Shaw Development agrees with all of what we've just talked about?
Yes, sir.
Oh, there's Mr. Rutland right here, yeah.
I'm sorry. I think it was a great project between the principals of my company, staff, and the, the neighbors out there at Cambria Crossing. I think everybody worked together, and I think it's going to be a nice asset for that, that end of the trailer.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Have a motion of a second. Any other discussion? Ben Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hopper?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye. And that is it for the street committee, Mayor.
Thank you. I meant to ask you first, thank you. Staff reports, town manager?
Additional report, Mayor.
Town attorney?
Aye.
Both staff and its director of engineering, Wayne Nelson, report on application for allocation from VDOT for revenue sharing projects covered in the resolution of support.
Yeah, Barber, members of council?
Thank you. Appreciate being able to present the funding applications for the revenue sharing program, VDOT program, for the FY 2018 funding cycle. The first project that we submitted was the Depot Street rail improvement project. It completes the, the loop of the CDVG project that began right here, to improve and sub-ronoc Street, East Main, then down Park Street. And there is, as you note, that says under construction, and I'm pleased to announce that we got the green light from Norfolk Southern today, and we'll get the green light from VDOT tomorrow, and we will get the contractor underway here on this project. But you'll note that we show future Ronoc Street improvements and potential connection to the Kornish Park. And there's a bridge over Walnut Branch. Here's Depot, Park Street, Ronoc Street, and the existing bridge right here.
So this has already been designed?
Uh, no, this is...
This is, okay. So the funding is for the design and the structure?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Here is the estimate of, the engineer's estimate of probable cost, 200, just excess of 268,000. Our business shares in excess of 134,000 for this project. Thank you. I wanted to start this project off with a bird's eye view, aerial view of downtown West Main, Hickok Street and Commerce. Very unassuming here when it rains, but what's happening underneath is the culvert discharges under these buildings, drains through a series of, under the buildings, through a culvert, and into the system here at Commerce Street. So our solution is to pipe that system and tie it in underground, require us to relocate sewer line, also require demolition of, of this structure right here. There will also be parking lot improvements to address the drainage, once that system is, is closed.
Wayne, one question with that, Mr. Nelson. Has the adequacy of the receiving system downstream been investigated enough to feel certain that that's going to be the limit of the project, the extent of the project?
Well, it's part of the ongoing CIP project process. Right now, we are proposing a study. We feel that that's adequate for this particular situation, but we do feel that a broader study to address some of the other problems downtown is also necessary.
You understand, yeah, what I'm saying?
I do.
There's a volleyball.
Absolutely, absolutely. We don't want to fix one problem, create another.
Right, yes, sir. Thank you.
I get you.
You mentioned the demolition of this building, is that what you're going to show us now?
Yeah, I was just gonna...
What exactly buildings are you talking about?
The, this building here currently is, I think it, the address is, go back one more, please. Yes. 49 West Main, excuse me. That is the barber shop currently, and the Shroud Corn, we've talked to him, and he's in agreement in support of this project.
So you're going to demolition, that, that's on the new barber shop?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. This is the, the building that we just referred to. Here's the back, back of the building. This is where the drainage comes out. It's channelized to some degree in it. Go ahead, please. That's looking up the, up underneath. This is, exits here and enters into the next building, and then exits, there's corrugated metal culverts right here, which then discharge into this system here, and this is Commerce Street. So this, this is estimated, engineer's estimate of probable cost is 817,000. Our share would be 400,000.
That's not going to replace what's underneath the street, as it's going to connect. It's going to, this enclosed, make it an entirely closed drainage system.
That is correct.
So it's going to pick up if the culvert discharges under the buildings and carry it all the way down to the existing culvert system.
Yes, it's approximately 10 foot wide, about four foot box culvert underneath West Main Street.
Looks like a great idea.
Long, long overdue.
When will the barber shop activate?
Well, certainly not until we're ready to start construction, and I think the owner has commitments, which seem to line up with this project, assuming that we get funding and we get it designed.
Oh, okay. But is it down the road with it?
Yes, it is, yes, sir. Want to give you a, a list of the other projects that we submitted on. The, these four projects right here, first one here is the North Franklin Street Storm Drain Extension. That, last year received funding, but not full funding. And so, we requested an additional 49, 594, and that's our match, total project cost. Engineer's estimate of probable cost, I should say, is 621,000. This is very similar to the West Main Street project, similar situation, storm drain, the drainage runs under the buildings there along North Franklin Street, and this project will pipe it and create a closed system as well. Arbor Drive sidewalk project, additional funding for that, as well as the Ronoc Street sidewalk project. And the engineer working on this project, fallen range intersection improvements, currently under design, and this, this pays the potential for additional funding. But we're in design. My hope is we won't need it, and then we'll, we'll have it designed here in the near future, where we can have a more accurate cost estimate. We went ahead and submitted four applications for maintenance. We're told that it's not likely it'll be funded heavily. Last year, we received no, no maintenance, paving, funds. But we want to send the message that it's still important to us. We're still down here. We still think this is viable program, and there will be a funding application next year, and then it'll start a two-year cycle after that. Okay? Any questions?
I got a question. On, on the previous screen, on the Ronoc Street sidewalk, you talked about traditional sidewalks, like the old cement and curb and gutter all the way up there, with some businesses we've already required, but it's so spotty, I mean, it's not a continuous network at all, not even closed anymore. I guess what I'm thinking is, you know, if you go out to corporate research in Blacksburg, it's their, their pedestrian accommodation, the sidewalk, is a lot like the Huckleberry Trail. And I see that we're going in that direction. Have we, have we ever thought outside the box, since, since the Ronoc Street corridor is so long? And are we talking from Depot out towards the?
No, sir. We're thinking up of Robert Street, crossing waves and extending up to County Government Center.
On both sides?
No, just, just one side.
Is it, has it been, there was some discussion going out towards Advance Auto or from Depot out that way? Was it there at one point?
Yes, but we haven't acted on that.
Mr. Nelson, I know it's not part of your program tonight, but are you able to give us a quick update on West Main Street?
The West Main...
As far as paving and repairing the packs, or what they're doing out there?
Oh, yes, yes. We did receive federal funding, primary road funding for that. We are scheduled to bid that for construction in the spring. We'll bid that next month, partially, in about a month from now. And that'll be, that construction will happen in the spring.
Okay, thank you.
It's not shown in this, Mr. Nelson, the Huckleberry Trail beyond Independence. What do we have in the next fiscal year? Please, please help me with that. Not anything shown of the revenue sharing. Is that, do we have additional engineering for the march down towards the Aquatic Center in the, in the T application, or not?
Well, there, I will announce that we had the kickoff meeting with VDOT today for the phase three of the trail, which will bring it up to Independence.
Right.
Also across the frontage of the school.
Right.
The, we have a trail study underway, and that draft should be here by the, probably in a couple of weeks. And in that, in that study is the cost, probable cost of the extension down North Franklin.
Okay.
Also included in there is, is the probable cost of a trail, complete street. I don't think it'll be a complete street, but using the Cambria Street route from the Recreation Center down to Cambria at the, at the tracks.
Okay.
That's part of that study. Those were some of the projects, like the Walkway Committee down there.
Okay, thank you.
Is our split, is it with the federal government or the state government or sort of all the above? And the reason I'm asking that, I've heard that the governor is going to, said the drastic production is going to be in spending next time. Is that going to affect any of these projects?
I believe so.
Well, what is the percentage of, of federal and state that we get?
The, the state, these projects are revenue sharing, those are, those are state funds, and that's 50/50 management. The transportation alternative, the, for instance, the Depot Park Trail Extension, that's a transportation alternative funding program, that's 80/20 split. Twenty on, 20 percentage, 20% on our, our part.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne Nelson. Next on the agenda is council reports. Mr. Hopper?
Um, yes, I have just one thing here. I'm not sure if you probably realize that there was a, a swim meet here this past weekend, and Virginia Tech was, was hosting it, and there were, I think, eight teams there, William Mary, Yale, Purdue, ODU, Connecticut, and Villanova were all here. And they came here on Wednesday, and they didn't leave until, I think, Saturday night. And so it was a good thing there. And a, a good sort of kicker to the thing is too, they held a swim clinic, and by the way, this is girls and boys, and they had a swim clinic on, on Saturday morning for people to come down to, in the area diving and swimming, which I thought was good, too. So, but that was a, a nice little addition here. And that's all I have in there.
Thank you. Mr. Shawalter?
Uh, Regional Commission, we just had a meeting last week, and Hill Johnson was there, and that's great, and Harry Collins, so we had three representatives, which is our turn now. But the meeting went, well, it's, it's our Thanksgiving weekend, so, or meeting, so you get a lot of commissioners who typically show up. We learned about what the commission does, how our money's spent, which was eye-opening, and our money is being spent well for the regional, regional cooperation. There was some talk about, what's been in the news about the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, and also the partnership we're going into economic as well. So there is a difference between what you read in the paper about that, I believe it was a company out in North Carolina that took a million dollars from the economic development partnership. But the new one that's coming down, Go Virginia, is something that's totally different than that, so don't confuse the two. Other than that, I see that we got Mike Tom in the audience, who participates in the SEVAC, which is the Central Business Advisory Council. Just to touch on this, the council did have a meeting earlier, a work session, so it's, it's, we're going to do an in-house plan. That's how we left it off, and this is, of course, for anybody attending. An in-house plan for downtown, instead of going outside and spending the funds that we reserved to go outside. Steve Biggs, our town manager, has proposed to council to save some money that we have the staff, and they can get this done, and we agreed wholeheartedly with it tonight. So we're going to put it in his court and his teams, and I'm sure we, the result will be what we expected, and we can save some money there, which is very important. So I look forward to it. And again, Mike, thanks for participating in that. Thanks for coming to meetings, I appreciate it. That's it for me.
Mr. Stipes?
No reports. I would like to wish my fellow council members and our citizens a very happy Thanksgiving, and I'm reminded, attending the Veterans Day parade, that our community is a great, it's a great community, it's getting better every day, and we owe a big debt of gratitude to our veterans for the liberties we enjoy every day. And it's just one of the things this month that I'm, you know, especially is mindful of, and several of those in this room were participating in that, and just like to say happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Commissioner?
Yeah, last week, Councilman Collins and I attended a, attended a tourism meeting, and they are still working on, you know, getting people to Montgomery County, so we gave them some of our input.
Is the webpage up on that yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
It's been up.
Yeah, it is.
Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Collins?
Okay, so the planning commission applications is up now. I think it's closed, right?
And I just wonder when we're going to take action on them. I do the interviews and stuff.
Are you asking that question or?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, I don't know, I would say that's probably going to be more up to planning and, and HR and the others to, to get working on that. I don't know that we're normally involved in those decisions, so we certainly can be if you want.
If I may, we have received four applications and it did close last Friday. And so we are pleased that we did receive, you know, the applications and, and I will be touching base with, with Mr. Biggs and, and we can huddle and come up with a plan on how to proceed with interviews and interview for the application process.
I'm sure we're involved in final approval, but as for the interview process, I think we base it on recommendations, just as we...
We've interviewed all the planning commissioners in the past.
Have we?
Yes, we have.
Okay. Then we can do that if you'd like.
Well, I think they'll confer and, but in the past, we have interviewed the planning commissioners.
Okay.
To make those appointments.
We'll be happy to facilitate, you know, there has been the typical process in the process for getting those, you know, as many positions as we also feel.
I think that's a good decision.
I mean, the typical process, I mean, the last two times we've had, in lieu of being in here, we wanted to go a little bit informal, which is the meeting room that we just have the work session in and we schedule them at twenty-minute intervals and we interview them.
That's correct.
We do that. I forgot.
Yeah, my bad. Been a long time since we've interviewed anybody.
And that's a good thing, you know?
I know. It is a commission for us.
That's awesome.
That's all you got? I will, since Mr. Hall is not here, we've picked up about twenty minutes. I, I will, I will comment as Councilman Hopper, I had, I was asked to come up and do an opening at the, on Saturday's finals at the swim meet. And one of the things that I found very interesting, and I confirmed this with the coaches, that since the tech has been using the facility, they have produced over eighty All-Americans through their swim program in the, in the time they've been associated here. And, and they're saying that that's probably one because of the facility and the, and the recruiting and the, you know, how their recruiting has helped, has been helped by, by this training facility. The other thing is...
Let me tell you, one thing I've been doing most of this tech right now, the men are ranked nineteenth in the country and the women are twenty-third in the country.
Okay, I did not see it. Thank you. The parade, Henry issued, issued a challenge to say that it should be, hope it's better. We have a commitment from the high school, they're going to participate with their course. They're going to sing Christmas carol starting about six twenty, six-thirties. And they will sing a few songs and then we're going to have the tree lighting celebration again and I invite council to get on the square with us. And we're going to walk parade, if any of you and your children, grandchildren and walk, we're going to, we're going to do that again this year. I think various parting gift to us last year was a banner that says Christiansburg Town Council, so we'll, instead, instead of people scratching their heads, who the hell those guys, we'll put, we'll put a banner out there, we'll let them know who we are.
Man, I want to make this clear, I said as good as last year, because it was great last year. You said it's going to be better.
Well, we're adding, we're adding the, we're adding the course this year and I think after they're through, they, they've asked to go down Main Street and, and Carol, all the way down to the, to the Farmer's Market.
The tree at six-thirty?
Tree's, the tree will be about seven.
Seven, okay.
Seven, five till somewhere. I'll, I'll get more information.
I put one more on that.
Sure, sure.
You know, last year was an incredible event, if anybody went down to the Christmas parade and the, and the, the merchants...
The market?
The market, the Christmas market that we had. But I want to, you know, there was a lot of people involved in this, but, in, in that and it's much appreciated and there were so many people downtown, I heard so much about it, but since Mike's on the subject, I just wanted to say, Mike Barber spearheaded that last year, the, you know, get lights on the tree and make it more of a festive event downtown and I just want to appreciate him for that.
I appreciate that, Mr. Shaw, I'd be very remiss if I didn't just tell you all that was the first lady's thing to move for the last five years has been, let's get a Christmas tree. And I, I told us, well, I just happened to mention it last year at a staff meeting in late October, in the next January, it was done, Justin and his boys had the trees decorated and lights ordered, so, but I do, I do want to certainly give acknowledgement tomorrow with Marlene, this is, this has become her pet project in the town, so, but thank you, Henry, I'll make sure that she gets that. That's all I have. Any other business to come before council?
I would just like to bring up one thing since Sarah's here, I mean, they do a great job and I think right now, I think we have, I saw on Facebook, we have what, fifty vendors or so? Fifty vendors this year and five food trucks, so it's going to be good.
And in closing, I want to, I want to thank Mr. Biggs for this retreat that we had two weeks ago, it was absolutely phenomenal. Lots of, lots of discussion and I think that it showed, it showed, I'm probably more familiar with it as I'm here more often downtown during the day, but I think, I think a lot of council members were really impressed with how deep, deep, deep into the staff that, that the love for Christiansburg goes. I mean, these guys, they give it all to the town. I was impressed with that, but we have some good things coming out of it. Look forward to a one week, one day meeting next year, two's a little tough, but it was good, it was something that we had needed and I think we all benefited coming. Gentlemen, do you all agree halfway, partially kind of? Okay. Anything else to come before council? We are adjourned.